We will be led in prayer by Councilman Schwartz. If you remain standing, we'll do the public. Councilman?
Dear God, we come together tonight to ask for wisdom as we do the people's work. We also ask for you to watch over all first responders and road crew men and women who are working around the clock for our benefit of the city. As always, we ask for the continued intercession of the Most Blessed Virgin Mary, and we ask for all of this through your son, Jesus Christ.
...
...of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and do the roll call. So get ready online.
Hollers?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Michael?
Here.
Neely?
Present.
Schwartz?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer? Young?
Present.
We have four.
All right, heading through adoption of the agenda, motion to adopt. Does someone online have a comment?
Randy just came on, I think.
Okay, Councilman, we see it, thank you. All right, we've got motion of second to adopt the agenda. All favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, opportunity for public comment. We've got two names. Susan Randolph, are you with us? All right, and then, I think I'm getting this right, Nick Garb, am I correct? I'm sorry?
What's up?
How'd you pronounce it?
Gospa?
Gospa.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah, if you just want to come up to the podium and just...
I wasn't planning on speaking, I just signed in.
Oh, okay, all right, thanks. That's all the names we had for a public comment then, so we'll go to public hearings, which are none, focused by the mayor, none, presentations from staff consultants, invited guests, very, first one of the new year.
So what I have included here in your packet for you tonight, as far as a financial update, is smaller than you've seen in the past. This is essentially the sales tax revenue collections. These would have been the collections that we got in the month of December that would have finalized all of the sales tax revenue for FY '24. Total collections, as you can see, for the general sales tax, $459,076 above what we had as budget projections, the capital improvement sales tax, $58,725 above, park sales tax, $360,053 above, and the public safety tax, $10,295. We brought this before you tonight because one of the items later in the agenda packet will make reference to some of the funds that were collected in the 1% general sales tax. I also did not bring any of the other reports forward that you would usually get, like the revenue model, and the fund balance report. We are working to finalize FY '24. We have the new audit firm, Williams Keepers, coming in for their second fieldwork visit, which will be the week of Martin Luther King Day. And so at that point, we hope to have information finalized, but further than that, we hope to have the ability to go to finance committee in January with the supplemental appropriation for the self-funded health insurance that we've talked about in previous meetings, and also any other appropriations we may need to cover up things that are in the negative. So hopefully by the end of the month and the January finance committee, we can bring those things forward. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Say no? Thank you. All right, takes us down to announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I'll just make a quick announcement. I think someone referred to it. Appreciate all the work of our Public Works Department over the last 48 hours and kind of moving the city through this. Mr. Bang, I heard Mr. Smith on the radio this morning, he did a great job. Any accolades you want to throw to the team?
Well, certainly, they put in a lot of effort. So they started at four o'clock on Saturday evening and basically worked straight through until about three o'clock this afternoon. So that was a lot of effort by a lot of people to try to keep those streets open. So we really appreciate the work that they did and the many, many continuous hours that they put in for them.
Someone moved up Taco Tuesday to the Astor, is that what I saw?
That is true.
They had a little bit of fun.
Yep.
Anyways, please thank them. We will make sure to do that in a future meeting to just say thanks.
Will do.
Grant, anything else that you wanted to say?
No, we've had a great few days of effort, and community's really appreciating a lot of the comments we're getting that our benefits really holds them at high regard for the workforce that they give our community.
I know that MoDOT and the county and, of course, city kept us informed, Mr. Smith, did a good job of sending me periodic emails, just kind of giving me a heads up on where things were going. I appreciated that. I tried to heed the advice and stay off the streets. He did a good job of keeping me up to speed. Anything, Mr. Councilman Allers from Admin, anything you need to report?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you. It's, we canceled this meeting Wednesday. I had surgery today, will be on pain pills for a couple of days. So, and it was okay with the city administrator on what, if that was okay to, if we didn't have anything pressing, seeing done, sent it around to everybody to cancel this month's meeting.
All right, Councilman Schwartz?
Our next scheduled meeting is January 23rd at 7:30 in Boom Bank Road.
Councilman Michael, public safety?
Mr. Mayor, our next scheduled meeting is the 30th, four o'clock.
Councilman Spencer, anything updated from Public Works?
Yeah, we'll be meeting this Thursday, January 9th at 7:30 here in the council chambers.
Other announcements?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, planning and zoning Thursday night at 1700 or 5:00 PM for civilian folks, because I completely forgot about that.
Thank you, Councilman. All right, takes us to consent agenda, the items on the agenda. Need action on those? Motion to approve, second. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, takes us to bills introduced 04-069.
In order to the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorize will the mayor and city clerk to execute a $271,868 and 25 construction contract with mere excavating LLC partnership Parkway aerial sewer crossing replacement project.
Bang?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so this is a contract to replace an aerial sewer that was destroyed earlier this year. We had some brush that got caught on the sewer and ripped it down. And so since that time, we've been pumping, going out with a truck and pumping the sewage around this area. And so this contract would replace the aerial sewer, we're asking, or have a check mark on this bill so that we can move that contract along as the weather is, remains cold and those pumping operations become more difficult. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Neely?
Mr. Bang, do you know how old the sewer that broke, or the pipe that broke was?
I don't have the answer to that question, but I could get an answer for you.
Old or was it new?
Oh, it's certainly, you know, in the 20 to 30-year-old range, I would have to assume. But it's, so certainly I wouldn't consider it to be new.
Yeah, and I read from our packet that contractors guarantee is to shore it up more to where it could withstand brush and debris coming at it. Is there, you know, our packet this week was 500 some pages, but besides that, do you know if there's any sort of a guarantee in that type of a contract that their warranty would be, you know, they come back and fix it if it was damaged?
So I think a large portion of that is tied to the design, the new design of the new, of the new pipe bridge. And so it probably wouldn't fall on the contractor himself if there was something that went, that didn't work out into the future, it would probably end on the design, which has been strengthened above and beyond what the existing pipe was.
Is there any sort of standard?
I'm not entirely for sure if there's a specific standard for, certainly there's, you know, we have similar type installations within the city, basically a steel encasement, you know, around a smaller interior pipe. And so, I mean, that style of pipe bridge is common, certainly in other areas in Jefferson City. I think what, part of how this system failed last time was the foundation was perhaps not as robust as it should have been. And so, you know, that is one of the elements that's getting beefed up in this design is the, is the foundation of this whole system.
Thanks for the information.
Councilman Spencer, did you have?
I was requesting that we suspend the rules so we can vote on this to get the project underway.
Anybody opposed to that? All right, we'll go ahead and ask the clerk to read the bill again.
In order to the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $271,868 and 25 construction contract with mere excavating LLC for partnership Parkway aerial sewer crossing replacement project.
All right, you have the bill before you. Any other questions or comments before we get to a vote? All right, we're gonna do a roll call vote.
Hollers?
Aye.
Hosleton? Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Bill Passos?
All right, 2024-070.
Amending the 2024-2025 budget by reclassifying construction inspector full-time position to parks resource supervisor full-time position within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. As city clerk has read, this is a request to amend the 2024-2025 budget by reclassifying our current employee who is a construction inspector to park resources supervisor to lead our JC Parks construction crew. This position will also serve as a team lead on larger projects, working closely with contractors, subcontractors, et cetera. The estimated financial impact of the salary and benefits is $13,697. And I would also like to add to mayor and council, the department once had a dedicated construction crew for internal projects across the parks, under the leadership of the former director, those, this crew was discontinued. However, through recent bids of projects and costs, rising costs associated with those projects, we've identified the need for reinstatement of the construction crew. Staff are excited about this change, as many of their skills and talents have been underutilized over the past couple of years, so we're looking forward to bringing it back. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. The Councilman Allers? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Ron, can you hear me?
Can you hear us?
Who did you call on?
You.
You. This was brought up before because we didn't, we're going to have the administration meeting, is, I was gonna ask Director Graffrath, is this a need to maybe place a double check mark, I apologize for not getting back sooner, on that, or is this something that we, we read, you know, the standard amount of time?
I mean, I'm obviously certain, open to whatever. I know city administrator Crane and I talked about reading it to this, at this meeting, and then waiting until the February, I think, 6th meeting, we're totally fine with that. But it's really, I'll follow the lead of council on that if they want to suspend it tonight.
Would there be any objection if I want to suspend the rules to move this along and that lets the director and the city administrator get things rolling a little bit quicker if there's projects in the pipeline they need to address quickly?
Councilman Spencer, before we get to suspend the rules. Anybody opposed to suspending the rules? Looks like it's unanimous, Councilman, so any other questions or comments? Councilman Hosleton, did you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, I saw that there was a financial impact listed, but also there was mentioned in the packet of savings of parks doing their own projects, as far as construction projects. Would you have an example of what kind of savings those would be, Mr. Graffrath?
Yeah, anytime you, you know, when we look at large projects and if there's scope of work that we can do as part of the larger project, there certainly is a cost savings by breaking those projects down and doing them internally. The most recent one we had was the Greenberry project that we bid out. There was scope of work in that project. We bid it all out for a contractor, and then we saw and we recognized that it was about two or three times what we estimated, so we identified areas within that, that scope of work that we could do internally and save some money. So that's probably the most recent example.
Thank you, I just wanted to have a chance for everybody to hear that.
Any other questions or comments? Can I ask the clerk to go ahead and read this? I'm sorry, Councilman Neely?
That's okay, thanks. I don't see any opposition in this room, and I certainly wouldn't think there would be any opposition amongst the public, so the only opposition I could think of would be internally. Do you know of any internal opposition to this, what seems like a good benefit?
No, like I said, the staff are very excited about this because a lot of them, you know, when we talk about their talents that they have, to take someone that's very gifted at construction and say, okay, we want you to go clean the park, we want you to paint the park, we want you to do miscellaneous jobs. This allows them to really showcase their skills and talents, and then also be very excited about their end product as well, so they're all very excited. Actually, staff that aren't even going to be on this crew are excited to bring it back.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, Councilman Schwartz?
Just to inquire of the director real quick, were we, what I seem to be hearing is that we got rid of this, that Mr. Spalding got rid of this and went, I'm guessing with a private contractor?
Yes, most, most of the projects in the past were contracted out or bid out, yes.
And who, who, who were they, who were you all using?
It just depends upon who the low bid was in most situations. Some of them were state contracts, some of them was outsourced.
You may not be able to answer this, but what was the rationale behind that?
I think that, you know, it's, I think that he saw value of doing it personally, and then he also shifted gears and went in other directions and really focused on beautification of the parks and some other areas within the department. I think he thought that by doing that, they could focus on other tasks at hand. However, we're seeing reverse effect now, in my opinion.
So the people that used to do this still worked for the parks, still worked for the parks, but we hired a contractor, developed our construction team, so we basically doubled the amount of money that we needed for these, these construction events?
I would, I would say yes, in a roundabout way.
Yeah, well, I applaud you for getting rid of it. That's government waste at its finest, and I applaud you for that.
Councilmen, seeing no other comments, I'm gonna have the clerk read the bill again.
Amending the 2024-2025 budget, reclassifying construction inspector full-time position to parks resource supervisor full-time position within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
All right, you've got 2024-070 in front of you for a roll call.
Hosleton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Aye.
Hollers?
Aye.
Bill Passos?
All right, thanks. Takes us 2024-071.
Amending the 2024-2025 budget by reclassifying one senior parks maintenance worker full-time position to park maintenance crew leader full-time position within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
Councilman Spencer? I'd like to suspend the rules if I want to. Any objection on this item, 071 to suspending the rules? Don't see any. Mr. Graffrath?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very similar to the previous bill, however, this would reclassify one senior parks maintenance worker to a parks maintenance crew leader. The gentleman that we're referring to has a very diverse set of skills and extensive experience in mechanical systems, HVAC, electrical, plumbing, and technical towing. His abilities have resulted in significant cost savings of thousands of dollars over the past couple of years, and we are expected to generate the same cost savings moving forward. I know on one example I can give you, we got a price quote on something that needed to be fixed, and that quote came back in the thousands, and he fixed it for $15, and it's still working effectively and efficiently, so he does a fantastic, fantastic job, not only for us, but for the whole city as well. The estimated financial impact with salary benefits on this is $14,945, and I'd be happy to answer any questions on this one.
Questions on 071? Ask the clerk to go ahead and read it again then?
Amending the 2024-2025 budget by reclassifying one senior parks maintenance worker full-time position to parks maintenance crew leader full-time position within the Department of Parks and Recreation.
All right, you've got 2024-071 in front of you for a roll call.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Hollers? Hollers?
You say hollers?
Yes.
Aye.
Hosleton? Bill Passos?
All right, 2024-070.
In order to approving grant between the City of Jefferson and Oracle Enterprises Incorporated.
Councilman Spencer?
I will not be requesting the suspension of the rules. We need to follow the public process to allow citizens some time to have some input on this, but it does leave me, if I may, to ask some questions of staff.
Let's let Mr. Moleman make his comments and then pull up another, Mr. Mole?
Thank you. This bill would amend the budget, the 2023-2024 budget by allocating excess sales tax revenue to the PPS demolitions line item, and also approve a cooperative agreement with Oracle Enterprises Incorporated. This cooperative agreement, the city financially participate in the demolition of the building at 1510 Jefferson Street, that is the old Ramada Inn slash Truman Hotel. So the city's participation would be capped at $250,000, based on waste hauling costs. So the city would participate either at $45 per ton if the owner were to do the hauling themselves, or $199 per truckload, which is about eight tons, if they were to hire Republic Service to do the hauling for them. So essentially, the mechanism would be that the $250,000 would be placed with a third-party escrow agent. Bills from Republic Services would be turned into the escrow agent, escrow agent verify those bills, and then make payments to the property owner based on the agreed rates. Money that is not used, you know, for these reimbursements would be returned to the city.
Work?
Would start with the three months of the execution of the agreement and demolition work, including grading, seeding, drawing, six months. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I just have some, we can go through a little bit of an exercise for clarification for the public on this issue here. Is there a way we can get a cost analysis done on, on what I believe are, and some of these wouldn't have to be done, on the three viable options I believe we have, which are, obviously, first option, the owners on their timeline, and at their expense, tears down the building. We don't need a cost analysis on that necessarily, but, and then the second approach is much like this bill, a shared approach with the city and the owners, with that investment capped, on the timeline to start and completion of tearing down the property. And then the third possibility option is the city starting the condemnation process, but there's some unknowns with that, and I know that maybe we can go through some of that, but what, and this is probably what I'm requesting for information that we can share with the public, and you don't have to answer these, but I just want to give you a little bit of a heads up on these, but what is the approximate timeline for the city to acquire the property if we do go through the condemnation process? What would be the approximate cost for that? And then the city is then having to fully absorb the cost of tearing down the property if we acquire it. Again, what would be the approximate cost? And I think it, there's something to be noteworthy on this, is that, you know, one of the current owners is a practicing attorney, which is probably an advantage to them, which also then kind of changes the dynamics of that option, too. So, you know, if we use prior examples of when the city acquires property, would you say that the city recoups all our cost or a percentage?
It's a percentage, it's rarely all.
Yeah, okay. And, you know, I guess the most recent example is obviously we have the Capitol Avenue acquisitions and the building that collapsed on High Street, where the city had to kind of intervene in that process as well, and we sold it for a significant loss, from my memory. So I'm just one of 10. I would hope maybe that some of my colleagues would share in the need of getting some of this information. I think it'd be beneficial to everyone, not only for us, but the public, to have some of these questions answered as well, so, thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Leighton?
Thank you. Ron, are you aware, in at least, in your timeframe, timeline with the city, have we ever used public funds in this way before a condemnation happened? Ron, are you aware, in at least, in your timeframe, timeline with the city, have we ever used public funds in this way before a condemnation happened?
We're, so probably the closest example is, as Council, uh, Spencer referred to, building on High Street. The time the city council decided that it wanted to invest funds to assist in the demolition of the property at the corner of, um, Madison and High Street. Uh, I believe the city participated in an amount of three hundred thousand dollars. This is ultimately what the city paid, uh, to do a surgical demolition to ensure that, uh, the owner stood the neighboring building, uh, wasn't stained. Um, as part of that agreement, um, it wasn't a condemnation, it was part of the agreement, the city owner of that property, uh, at, at the corner of High Street and Madison. And I believe we ended up selling it for forty, forty-five thousand.
We almost give it away for a dollar also.
So, um, that's probably the closest example of where the city had a interest, particular interest in seeing a demolition in a particular area and invest in public funds. Yeah.
Councilman Hallers?
I did a little checking, uh, yesterday, day before or something, and been trying to do some research through backed editorials from Jeff City News Tribune and all that, and stories. And I believe the city council passed a budget item of a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars and change to help with the demolition. And then it was referred to, uh, one of our directors, Britt Smith, on what we would know about the fixing of Madison Street after all the equipment and all that. So I know that cost was added into that. So I was thinking we were just a little north of like three hundred thousand, around three hundred and twenty thousand dollar range, if my research was right. So that would be an, uh, uh, the earliest one I could see back on that, um, the, uh, you know, where the city has had to do this. And after years, because it did go to court, if I remember right, Councilor Moleman, that we did go to court at some time with the Webergs and the, uh, my, I'm sorry, I can't remember. Niedert, maybe, uh, was the other owner of that, so, um, so that process drug out for probably three years before anything was done. So, um, I just wanted to, just to say that as much as, um, I probably do not like this idea, it's something that this city and the people that serve on the current city council and past have always heard about, that this needs, is an eyesore, when can we get something done? And, uh, as much as, you know, you don't like to do that, I think it's in the best interest of Jeff City for the visitors who travel through, who stop in, to see that finally gone and, uh, taken down and at least, uh, be at grade level. So, um, that, those are my opinions and the research I've done on this issue.
Councilman Spencer and then Councilman Millen?
Yeah, so I just wanna be clear, I don't wanna send any mixed messages of just a single request of a council member. So if there's any other council members that wanna join in this effort of getting information, I would appreciate.
Absolutely.
Some support.
For sure.
I'm, I'm unclear what you, what do you?
I, I'm, I'm asking for my colleagues to, for, to join me in, in requesting this information, so it's just not coming from me, that it's coming from the full council or.
Coming from me.
Councilman Millen?
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions about the proposed agreement. Mr. Moleman, can you, in two, I believe it was two A I of this agreement? Forty-five dollars per tonne of solid waste dumped at the J C landfill, if property owners use their own equipment to haul solid waste to the J C landfill. Could you explain to me how you would perceive that to work in the physical? Uh, I'm over at the Truman Hotel site, and I'm the, the owner, I've hired company X, or I'm in a dumpster myself, whoever it may be, that go over to Republic, what happens?
So the, the load gets weighed, and then there is a bill that is generated. Um, essentially, what's being proposed here is that the bill is forwarded to the third-party escrow agent. And so, you know, he says, takes a look at the bill and says, okay, that was fifty times, fifty times forty-five. Write the check, you know, next load comes in, a hundred tonnes, a hundred times forty-five, write the check. So that would happen as many times as it takes to get it, uh, you know, feeling down and, 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 you know, disposed appropriately, up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. So Republic is gonna verify that it's the developer, and that's how they're gonna issue an invoice?
So it's, so essentially, there's two ways that hauling of solid waste can happen in Jefferson City under our contract. So contractors have the right to use their own equipment and forces to haul. Um, or they can hire Republic Services to haul for them.
Yeah, but I'm just talking about two A I, which is their, them hauling.
Right, so those are, those are the only two ways under the city's solid waste contract, or it's a, that's always hauling, you know, demolition waste happens.
Correct.
So it's, if, if, you know, some other hauler were being used, which that's not what is being contemplated here, uh, because this needs to comply with the city's codes, uh, my assumption is that Republic Waste would reject the load, not let them dump, because they don't have a right to.
I guess what my question is, is when the, when the dump truck gets down to Republic and they are, you know, with Truman, right, with Oracle Enterprises, that's the verification for Republic to then weigh that, create the invoice, and send that to the escrow agent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So in that process, cause that process concerns me quite a bit, in that process would, it doesn't seem to me like there would be any verification that that solid waste is coming from the Truman site. I might say it is.
Aye. So what you kind of are talking about, it would be both a breach of the contract and gross fraud. So, um, yes, in that particular stage, situation, we'd stop paying, um, you know, stop paying on those contract at the breach.
And spend a lot of money in that process?
Probably mostly the, uh, prosecutor's money in that type of situation, but yeah. I mean, it, what, what you're talking about would be criminal.
What part of the contract would that scenario breach?
The entire contract, that we're paying for waste from the Truman.
I wonder if we couldn't be, in this contract, we couldn't be more explicit and create a way to, you know, have company X do this, or have Republic do it, even maybe just leave it to option B. Where Republic is hauling, they're setting, a lot of times you have a demo, I don't know, you know, if this is gonna be a wet demo, you know how much asbestos they have?
Uh, asbestos remediation's already happened.
Oh, it's already happened?
Yeah, so, um, years ago.
Okay.
So there, there is no, from what I understand, there is no special waste with this.
Okay. So asbestos remediation happened, and this place is somewhat gutted?
See, that's probably fair.
Wow. Okay. Um, lost my train of thought. Would there be a way to take two, two A, you know, I don't know any council's kind of approval here, but, you know, we can certainly talk offline, but leave this to two A two and take two A one out of it, just so there's a little bit of, um, know what I wanna call it, uh, oversight in terms of where the material comes from, you know? With two A two option, you know, that, that dumpster, that demo dumpster is getting set down there and it's coming from there. Two A one op, two A I option, I, I don't know, you know? But I, I mean, I certainly understand your point that it would be a, potentially be a breach of this contract.
Not potentially, that would be gross breach of this contract.
Okay, a gross breach of the contract. Did we ever consider putting this property on, I don't remember, maybe Councilman Hallers or Lester do, but we, we had an abandoned building code in our city code that only related to residential buildings, and in the last few months, we included commercial buildings in that code so we could start penalizing some of these people for gross neglect of their properties. Was there any ever, I don't know how much time there was to do it, but was there ever any staff discussion to get them on that list?
You'd, you'd have to.
Yeah, I, I could verify whether they've been added right now. I know our staff over the last couple of months have been identifying properties. Um, but the first billing wouldn't go out till April, so there is time for anyone added to that list to basically, you know, meet the, the intent of that being removed. So, but I can double check to see if they were added in the meantime.
So from the time that that code was effective, they had how many days to register themselves? Is it seven or fourteen?
I'd have to go back and look at the text specifically. It was somewhere in that timeframe.
And then if, let's say if they were on that, that abandoned building list, they would have a, uh, registration fee of two hundred and fifty dollars, and then they would pay a semi-annually thousand dollar fee?
I believe that, that's the, the numbers, yes.
Okay, and then they would also be on that abandoned building registry. Uh, would that add any more, uh, fee to their, to their other two fees? I mean, would, would that, would that create any other situation for them in which they would wanna take action based on, you know, a penalty?
Nothing beyond the abandoned building, uh, reg, you know, semi-annual fee, is that the fees you're talking about?
Yeah.
If there was, you know, otherwise abatements that would need to take place, and obviously those would be something they would have to pay as well, but just that program is, yeah, it's every six months.
I noticed when we got the abatement information, uh, there wasn't anything there for twenty-four that I recall, if you recall, but did we not abate in twenty-four at that particular property? Or did I miss something?
I don't know if I could recall that off the top of my head. We can look at that.
Last, last entry was in twenty-three, that list. I know Public Safety spent some time there in twenty-four, as did they every year. In that, I'm sorry, I'll let somebody else talk, I just have one final question for you, Mr. Moleman. Um, in the agreement, as you mentioned, it states that the property owner should turn over the, um, the property to a state where the ground is graded, seeded and strawed. If, if we got to a position with this agreement where they've billed our escrow agent for three months, you know, they're half demo, I think the agreement says we have to pay within fourteen days, um, so we've paid likely. Could we get stuck with something that's not a full demo and half tax dollars in it?
Yes, I, in theory, you could, but we would sue for breach.
You would then sue anyways?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I'm just trying to figure out every scenario that could, I'm not saying that any of this will, but, um, I think those are all of my questions.
Okay. Councilman Hozelton, you were on screen, did you have a comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As far as, uh, addressing Aaron Mealy's concern that, uh, Truman Hotel, uh, demolition products or remains were actually appearing, I believe the dumpsters are actually serial numbered. So whatever Republic leaves at that site, um, I'm, I'm sure they have some sort of mechanism. If not them, then our escrow agent would probably be very wise and prudent to take note of those serial numbers and when they come and go from that site and are uploaded and downloaded. So I believe that would be a very efficient way of making sure that the Truman Hotel itself is actually going to the landfill and not some other project.
Councilman Millen?
So, uh, Councilman Hozelton, yeah, that's, that was my exact point, is to, to carve out two A I of this agreement, and we've been two A two, um, of the agreement, so, so there is a dumpster there with a serial number and it can be tracked. The first option allows them to use their own dump truck, their own, their friend's dump truck, a contractor's dump truck, and so on.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, um, also for, if Mr. Smith could kinda, um, give an update as far as the enforcement of some potential code issues at, at this location. Um, is it the housing authority, is it under their purview to, to, um, say that the, I know one of, one of the main, uh, obligations of the property owners to make sure that property is secure? I've had concerns about that, cause it's, it's not secured in all four directions, you know, east, north, west. Cause I mean, on the, on the north side of the property, going down Jefferson Street, even though there's, there's an incline, decline, um, there's no fence to secure it, block entry of, of people. So is it under your department that is, that is enforcing the code for making sure that the, the property is safe and secure, or secure, I should say? Um, or is the housing authority in, but the housing authority then says they're in compliance? And under your, under your, uh, um, uh, input as well, or is it just strictly their?
No, we typically wouldn't have a lot of communication with the housing authority when it comes to the, the application of the city's property maintenance code. So if there's a violation there, our staff would respond to that, investigate it, and if there was, uh, an issue that was not secured or other property maintenance, um, code issues, then, then they would be noticed. Uh, if that wasn't corrected, then it would be a, depending on what the, the violation is. So, and Mr. Moleman can correct me if I'm wrong on, on the housing authorities involved in that, but, um, as far as I know, I don't think our team has responded to any, um, calls for any type of code violations on that site, uh, in 2024, just to respond back to Mr. Mealy's question. Uh, and fencing the site wouldn't necessarily be required at this point, so essentially, the doors and the windows would need to be secured at that point to deny, to deny entry into the building. But fencing isn't a requirement at this point.
And so it was never a requirement? They, they just voluntarily put some of the fencing up?
I think they did, uh, to help, uh, secure it additionally.
And, um, are, is your staff comfortable with condition, only as far as being secure?
Um, I would just say, I think, uh, depending on our last response, uh, whenever a inspector was on site, uh, there was no, um, particular issue. And like I said, I don't think we've been called to that site in 2024, uh, so it would have been at least a year ago before we responded to the type of complaints on that site.
Cause it's complaint-driven. You guys only go on-site with complaint, you don't periodically.
We do, we do a, a twice yearly drive-through, uh, the community to do kind of more proactive responses. But, uh, as far as I could see, looking through our records, there was no, uh, indication that there was a violation at that site, um, any of those proactive investigations in 2024.
Thank you.
Councilman Spencer?
Still trying to wrap my head around why we're even involved in any of this. You know, it's private property. The guy's gonna tear it down whether we give him two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or not, because he wants to put something there. I mean, if that's the case, we should go around everybody in town that needs money and just give them money. I mean, this is, this guy is ridiculous. I mean, continues to get over on the city. I mean, yeah, it is an eyesore, trust me, nobody likes looking at it, but But whether we give him $250,000 or not, he's going to tear that building down. I mean, I just don't get it. I don't understand it. But I guess if we got the money, let's throw it away, I guess. I mean, I don't, it doesn't make no sense to me how we can just, you know, this guy continues to get over on the city. Till we put our foot down, he's going to continue to do what he's doing. That's it.
Councilman Schwartz, were you?
Yeah, I just, and I don't even know who to direct this to. Maybe it's Mr. Moleman, but, or maybe Mr. Crane. But the the initial agreement with this organization was set up by the Housing Authority, if I'm not mistaken. Is that a correct statement?
There was an agreement between the Housing Authority and a related entity that dealt with the neighboring property. Five acre site on which the Holiday Inn was built. However, this site at 1510 Jefferson was not a subject to that agreement. I think it'd be inaccurate to say any type of a break that applied to 1510 Jefferson.
So who, who did that go through then? The former council?
So back in 2017, City Council approved a resolution that approved a redevelopment plan. It's under the land clearance for redevelopment authority. City Council approves, it's called redevelopment plan. It's basically, here's what we would like to see happen. The actual granting of tax abatement under the LCRA law. And any redevelopment agreement to enforce that goes through the Housing Authority. So the Housing Authority entered into an agreement that covered the five acres on which the Holiday Inn is now built. There was never, there was never, there was never an agreement that required anyone to do anything with this particular piece of property.
So who, I guess, passed the incentive package for this family to do what they've done there so far?
Housing Authority, under the LCRA law. They're granted 10 years tax payment.
And it was, it was a 10 year tax abatement, is that what I heard?
Yes.
So we're already giving money to this family. It's just not an appropriation. It's a lack of bringing in revenue to the Housing Authority. So my question would be then, why aren't they paying for it?
Who's they?
The Housing Authority.
The Housing Authority doesn't have any type of code enforcement mechanism.
Well, they got money, don't they?
You have to ask the Housing Authority.
And who approves their budget?
They approve their own budget.
So they approved their own budget. They got us into this situation and now we're being forced to make a decision on whether the city is going to be the one to bail them out. So my recommendation moving forward was, and I don't know if this is Mr. Crane or you, is to contact the Housing Authority requesting at a minimum a cost share and a maximum the entire freight on tearing this thing down because we didn't get us in this situation. And I don't think it's right for us to have to get us out of it. And I, that wasn't a question. I'm finished, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Lester?
My understanding, other, beyond being an eyesore, that this is a public safety problem. Things were called to the site continuously. Fires at that location, dead body was found. I think this is just a disaster waiting to happen. And I don't think anybody thinks the proposal that we have is is good. It's just that among the options, it may be the best that we have in terms of cost or time to get something done. And I think that's the point of more information, try and confirm some of that. That's, that's my understanding of where we're at. Other options cost us more and it's going to take more time. Anyway, just wanted to make those points.
Thank you. Councilman Hozelton, were you trying to make a comment?
I guess I was, Mr. Mayor. We meet with, we meet with Housing Authority. Their next meeting is the third Tuesday of this month, I believe. But I could definitely bring those points, Councilman Schwartz, to them. If they haven't taken note of what we discussed here tonight by then.
Thank you. Councilman Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several questions, in which colleagues have brought those up. The biggest hurdle that I'm having difficulty getting over is using taxpayer money for a private entity, for a private business. Because I think that will open us up. If it didn't, using the Madison Street, High Street example, if that somehow offered predicate for this, I don't know. But I think that's dangerous business to get into because it certainly other entities within the city to maybe not take care of their properties to standard. If there's a chance that the city could offer up, because it's an eyesore for the city, it makes it look better. We all agree with that. But I've heard a lot from constituents, more than I've ever heard since I've been on council, about this one issue. And not one has been supportive, not one.
Councilman Spencer?
Councilman Lyle, I think that's part of my request of having the staff kind of go back and give us some additional information. Because, you know, I've also, this has also been a biggest complaint that I've heard about is having this building, this eyesore, this, the safety hazard. And I think it's pretty well, I think most people on the council remember, every time we've had an issue or a discussion on this in closed session, I've always gone back and said, how can we get the participation of the Housing Authority to participate in this? Because this is, this is a problem that they created. And I know we've got a lot of good citizen members on that commission that weren't a part of that. And their current legal counsel didn't have any, any part in this deal either. It's just, you know, the mayor's been very supportive. Councilman Schwartz has been very supportive of helping me work with this issue. And it's just, it just is an option that we have before us. That, that's what we're trying to do. Instead of just continuously saying, there's nothing we can do about it. We've had staff kind of come up with some creative alternatives. And, you know, it is, for me, the biggest issue with this is, is a public safety concern, life safety concern. It'd go against everything I stood for or worked for as being a 25 year veteran of the Fire Department and not put public safety and the life safety of our citizens first. So this is, that's my viewpoint on it. It's not to intimidate or influence anyone on this council. That's just the way I'm looking at it. And I think there's a lot of just misinformation out there on how we should have handled this or how we can handle this. If you're counting down a dollar and cents issue, this is probably the cheapest alternative. I share everyone's concerns of using tax dollars for, for private entity, for profit business. I get it. It's not a, not a comfortable position to be in. And, but again, I'm just looking at it from the sole perspective and the eye lens of public safety and my brothers and sisters in the fire service and, and even the police officers or police department. They've been known to enter burning buildings to look for, for folks, you know. So we know, we know the history on this property. We know the background. There's people probably living in or in there right now as we speak. The Fire Department and EMS personnel hauled off a dead body, like Mr. Lester said. There's evidence of small fires for heating. People are using that facility illegally. It's the property's owner's responsibility to secure it. They've not done a very good job with it. And we know that, the public knows it, and they know it. But again, this is, this was an option that lays before us. And I think we, you know, why I didn't want to suspend the rules tonight, because we, we need to let the public have more time to get, you know, information and have involvement in it. So I appreciate that, me and some of the council tonight. So thank you. Mr. Mayor, one final.
Councilman Michael?
Something that just struck me sitting here. If, if the property owner had not been motivated up till this point, the last seven plus years to clean the site and to develop it, I would think with, with the site a half a mile over the hill with the soccer complex would create, if never before, certainly create the opportunity for them to invest in their own property to see a direct benefit of construction and development and tourism and the sports competitions and all the various people that are going to use that site. I would, that would certainly have restaurant needs, hotel needs. I think they would directly benefit from that opportunity. And if not ever motivated before, I would think now would be motivation enough to develop their own business. That just came to me sitting here, so.
Councilman Hozelton, I've seen you on screen. Did you have a comment?
I guess I did have a comment. I can put the motion out there if there is interest in council having a joint session or at least sending one or two representatives to Housing Authority to address the, the details of this process and this deal. Is there an interest for that if I put that motion out there on the table?
I feel that that's staff's obligation, Mayor.
Yeah, I think we.
That while that's staff's obligation, if we're going to do joint sessions, it does have to come directly from us. So we have to make that decision and then staff responds accordingly as far as making that happen. So is that something we're interested in doing?
Certainly council can act as you feel appropriate. I think we have the ability to go through that board with kind of the sense of council, here's a request, and try to get something before them at their next meeting, which I think is a week from tomorrow. But we, we can do that based on the conversation tonight.
I believe it's the day after the next council meeting.
Next council, well, next council meeting is probably going to be in February.
Well, then I take that back. It's, well, the third Tuesday, the third Tuesday in January.
Does Housing Authority have any funds other than federal funds?
I don't believe so.
If so.
But that's something I find out more about, get back with you on.
Think forever.
All right, any other comments on 24-072? Councilman, or Councilman Hozelton?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
Oh, no, I just wanted to say thanks for entertaining that idea. And if they were interested, you know, we could proceed. If not, otherwise just leave it there. Thank you.
Okay, I, I show my invite from them for next Tuesdays, so we'll have to clarify the date of their next meeting. All right, Councilman.
I just, I just noticed something. We need, we need a volunteer city council member to stay on camera to keep a quorum. We need six. It'd probably be preferable for as many as possible.
A volunteer jumps to the rescue. All right, we got two, we're good to go.
Thank you.
All right, let's jump to 2024-073.
The ordinance approving the redevelopment project of the Christie Drive Tax Increment Financing Plan and adopting tax increment financing therein.
Mr. Moleman, right back to you.
Thank you. I'm actually gonna, for the next four bills, kick this over to Lindsay Colish with Lauper Municipal Law. Lauper Municipal Laws are outside Special Economic Development Council. So I will turn it over to Ms. Colish.
So which one?
So it is 62, 63, 64, and 65. I don't think there's any reason we can't handle these in order.
We're on 73 right now.
Oh, jeez. Okay, I'm getting ahead of us, sorry.
Yeah, it's the Christie Drive TIF plan.
I already made my, my, my way home here. Once again, I'll turn this over to Ms. Colish as well, apologies.
Okay. Welcome.
Sure.
Just in case folks on YouTube didn't hear.
Sure, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Lindsay Colish. I'm, like Ryan said, with the law firm Lauper Municipal Law. We serve as the city's Special Economic Development Council. You might remember me from last month, we talked about the Christie Drive incentives package. We talked about the Christie Drive TIF plan, the TIF contract that governs the entire incentive package, the Christie Drive CID petition, and then the cooperative agreement, which also governs the, how the CID functions. All four of those, like Mr. Moleman just mentioned, will be on the agenda shortly. But this first bill, 2024-073, actually activates the TIF. If the council approves the TIF plan shortly, that TIF plan will be approved, but nothing has started yet. This ordinance will actually activate the TIF plan and start the, the clock on the TIF. We talked about last month about, there's two different parts of the TIF. One, it lasts for 23 years. And then two, there is an increment of tax that is generated by the development. This ordinance starts that 23 year clock and then also establishes 2024 as the base year for that increment of, of tax revenue that will be generated by the project. So this, this ordinance, it really kicks off the project once the plan is actually approved. This ordinance will actually start the project.
Council, Mr. Moleman, the council probably needs to address a check mark on this one, is that?
No, 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 not at all. So, so what we will do is first reading and then likely, I don't, I don't know if a final decision has been made, but likely what will happen is at the next meeting, this bill will be postponed indefinitely until such time that the developer decides that it is the appropriate time for those incentives to start. So that is the, the actual tax abatement. Send a letter to the developer and the assessor saying, start the abatement. And so the timing on that is pretty critical. You know, essentially what you want. critical. You know, essentially what you want is, um, you want it to stretch out and use up as much as that twenty-three year, um, period as possible. And so, you know, i- in some situations, um, you know, you have this activation ordinance and it can be a couple of years before it gets finalized. So it can get sit kind of on the city's agenda for as long as it's needed and then, uh, finally approved when the developer is ready to turn on that incentive. And because the taxes, um, you know, that they want that tax abatement, they want that increment. So, but ultimately that's up to the developer to, to kind of sort out that timing. This just sets the stage. Uh, so that way, when that timing is kind of decided that it's right, then we can move forward and on an expedited basis, um, under it, under a, um, you know, under a, an ordinance that is already kind of within the, the city's process, kind of already in the hopper. Um, so it's very unusual. We don't do things like this very often, but you know, at the next meeting, we would expect that this would be either postponed indefinitely or postponed to a day. Um, I don't know if, uh, Mr. Mushul, uh, the developer's legal counsel has any more insight on what they're thinking from an activation standpoint. We don't need any other action tonight. We just need first reading.
So at the next meeting, then Councilman Schwartz would need to make some kind of a motion once we figure out what that motion is.
Correct.
I, I believe it will just be activated at the next meeting, that this ordinance would just be approved, but we'll confirm with the applicant and make sure that that's what they want to do.
You, you want to come to the podium, just verify that? Thank you very much. Just identify.
Uh, Ben Mushul with the Pulsonelli Law Firm on behalf of the developer. The intent right now, I think we are going to activate, uh, as soon as we can. So likely the next meeting in February, when, uh, when that comes around. We're eager to kick off the project and get rolling with it. So that's our intent as of now, but, uh, I think that's where we're going.
Okay. Thanks for the call.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments from council? I know we've got four additional bills coming up in a few minutes. All right, we'll go ahead and move into bills pending then. Twenty twenty-four dash zero six one.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing a supplemental appropriation to the Jefferson City Police Department amending the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual budget and authorizing the expenditure of such funds.
Chief was getting antsy back there. We bounced over him. Chief, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, as the clerk stated, uh, this is just a request that we would be able to utilize thirty-nine thousand from our drug forfeiture treasury funds to conduct an audit and inventory of our evidence room. Uh, this department will be happy to answer any questions.
Questions. All right, you've got twenty twenty-four dash zero six one in front of you for roll call.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Callers?
Aye.
Hozelton? Job?
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right, that'll take us to twenty twenty-four dash zero six two.
An ordinance approving the Christie Drive Tax Increment Financing Plan designating a redevelopment area, declaring the proposed redevelopment area a blighted area, and designating Land Investments LLC as the developer's redevelopment project.
Start with you, Mr. Mollman, that you were gonna.
Can get over to Ms. Colish.
Okay. Welcome.
Sure. Thank you. This is the TIF plan that we first saw and on December sixteenth. Um, since then, there has been no amendments or anything different with the TIF plan. So unless there's questions, I don't have anything further to add.
Any?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Schwartz?
I'll go ahead and move, uh, to do pass.
All right. Thank you. All right, you've got twenty twenty-four dash zero six two in front of you for a roll call vote.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Callers?
Aye.
Hozelton? Job?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Bill passes.
Right. Twenty twenty-four dash zero six three. And I, I would just remind council, these are all bills pending, so they are in front of you when the clerk reads them.
An ordinance approving a tax increment financing contract between the city of Jefferson, Missouri and Land Investments LLC for the implementation of Christie Drive Tax Increment Financing Plan and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract.
Any questions on twenty twenty-four dash zero six three? All right, do a roll call vote.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Callers?
Aye.
Hozelton? Job?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right. Twenty twenty-four dash zero six four.
An ordinance approving the petition to establish the Christie Drive Community Improvement District and establishing the Christie Drive Community Improvement District.
All right. Any questions, comments on twenty twenty-four dash zero six four?
I have just one. I just wanted to make sure that the council's aware, there is now an amended CID petition. Um, after the close of the public hearing in, in December, um, the applicant had asked to replace two of the initial board of director members. And, um, because the CID Act allows that and, and we were able to get notices out, that was amended. And that was the only change since your December meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments on zero six four? All right, do a roll call vote.
Motion to approve.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Callers?
Aye.
Hozelton? Job?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right, then twenty twenty-four dash zero six five.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into a cooperative agreement with the Christie Drive Community Improvement Tax Improvement District for funding and financing of community improvement district improvements in relation to the Christie Drive Tax Increment Financing Plan.
Questions or comments? All right, do a roll call vote. You've got zero six five in front of you.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Callers?
Aye.
Hozelton? Job?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right. Thank you very much for your assistance in getting us through this TIF and for the, all the work at the last meeting. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Takes us to twenty twenty-four dash zero six six.
An ordinance approving a real estate agreement between the city and three eighteen Jefferson Street LLC and a related budget amendment.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. So this bill would, um, supplement appropriation, uh, to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, uh, and approve a three hundred and fifty thousand purchase agreement, uh, with the owner of one-on-one West Wallway. Um, so this property is on the, uh, Wallway Alley, uh, close to, uh, Jefferson, kind of mid-block in between, um, High Street and McCarty. Um, this property had been previously contemplated for purchase by the city. Um, but, uh, the, the property owner, um, is motivated to sell and reduced asking price down to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, anticipated use for this property would be for the city's parking operations. Um, and that is anticipation of the eventual and imminent demolition of Madison Street Parking Garage where those operations are currently being, um, housed and ran out of. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, um, you haven't, I, I know they, they had, um, approached us before about purchasing the property, um, either last year or the year before. I can't exactly remember. Uh, and I think there was a couple times, actually, when we, before I got on council, there was a grand plan of purchasing the property, tearing it down, building a parking garage at that location. And then I think they reapproached the city, purchased the building. Um, again, I don't know if that was a year, year and a half, two years. What, what was that figure? I mean, it was.
So, I, I believe, I, I think it was closer to two years ago. It was really more of, more of a check-in, um, to see if the city was interested. And at the time, um, we weren't, um, you know, the, the purpose that we had contemplated, um, really wasn't really on the table anymore. So I don't believe that there was any serious discussion about purchase price.
But they gave us a, a figure, didn't they?
You know, not that, not that I actually recall, but I'd have to go back and look at my notes.
Okay. No problem. I, I just was trying to convey that, um, there had been a previous discussions and that the prices gotten lower. So.
At the time of the parking garage, it was about five hundred and sixty to five hundred and eighty thousand, because two pieces together were a million dollars. And that was to tear it down. I mean, this is a proposal at almost half the cost and to utilize it.
I mean, logistically, it fits in within our long-term plan of what we're trying to accomplish with the parking garage, even having to be replaced. So I, I appreciate, I'm, I'm just saying, I appreciate staff's involvement in this and working and saving us significant dollars. So, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right, you've got zero six six in front of you for a roll call.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Callers?
Aye.
Hozelton? Job?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Bill passes.
All right. Twenty twenty-four dash zero six seven.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adopting elected officials operating guidelines.
Mr. Crane?
Thank you, Mayor. These guidelines establish and clarify processes and expectations for content, conduct of the city business officials, including interactions between the, the staff and the public. Uh, this was presented at a May retreat and approved for consideration by the admin committee.
All right. Questions or comments? Councilman Schwartz, were you?
Yeah, sorry. I.
You've got the.
Uh, yeah, you know, the more I look at this and, and read through this, I think what we've created is a handbook that will probably be a valuable resource to council folks and especially incoming council members. I know, um, the Missouri Municipal League puts on a, a deal for, for newly elected council folks as well, kind of telling them exactly what's in this handbook. I think it's a severe waste of time to put this in our ordinance. I think it's long. I don't think it belongs in law. I think it's common sense. Um, I don't think that if you don't know how a bill becomes a law, um, maybe you're in the wrong business. And so, um, I just believe that this is unnecessary waste of time. And it certainly doesn't belong in our city code. So I'm going to ask, uh, my colleagues to vote no with me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there anyone else online that was wanting to make a comment? Councilman Spencer, did you have your hand up?
No, I did not. I do have one question, Mr.
Well, I'm gonna, you, you want to just clarify something that was?
Yeah, no, I'm just, I don't see in the ordinance that this is an expectation of codification.
Correct. It's not how it's set up.
Councilman Michael?
So if, if things come up down the road that require either an addition or subtraction or modification, whatever, it comes back to this body and would be, if those amended, if, if approved, would take majority vote of the council to make any changes to this.
Correct. For those online, the answer that was yes. All right, we've got twenty twenty-four.
Mr. Mayor?
Zero six seven. Any other comments?
Schwartz is.
Very, very quickly.
Schwartz?
It's, uh, twenty twenty-five. Our city has been a city this year for two hundred years. We've never had this in our, in our law before. I think, uh, if we, uh, we did our right for two hundred years, I think we can move forward, uh, without having this, um, in the ordinance as well. So again, I'm going to ask my colleagues to vote no with me. Thanks.
Any other comments on zero six seven? All right, you've got the bill in front of.
Big Randy.
Councilman Hozelton, did you have a comment?
I was gonna say, uh, Mr. Mayor, if there isn't an appetite for voting on it tonight, I wonder if we could go ahead and just have, put on the informal calendar and maybe we can look at it later.
Well, that would be the bill sponsor or six council members.
Thank you.
Councilman Allers?
I've heard the concerns and all that, and I would, uh, I would move to put it on the informal calendar.
Okay. That will take us to twenty twenty-four dash zero six eight.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending city code provisions regarding discipline of the mayor and city council members.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. This bill would amend the city code to, uh, amend the city's existing provisions regarding discipline of the mayor and city council members. Um, kind of primarily, uh, what this bill does, it, uh, it adds to the city code a process for, uh, discipline less than removal. Uh, currently, the city code really only contemplates an action for removal when dealing with discipline of the city council. Um, this would, would add an option, uh, for such, uh, penalties, censure, reprimand, uh, loss of chairman or vice chairmanship, or, um, or removal, uh, as a liaison to, uh, boards, committees, and commissions. Um, what this bill also does, it clarifies the procedures, the existing procedures, uh, I think, in, uh, in pretty important ways. Um, previous analysis of what we have on the books now, um, I don't think what we have now really works from a process. Uh, there's just too many inconsistencies and open questions. Um, I just don't think it's a very well-laid out process, uh, that dates back to, uh, the seventies. Um, also, um, of, of significance is, uh, that. Also, um, of, of significance is that, uh, in situations where the city is in need of assistance, the city council is in need of assistance, this would, uh, provide for, uh, the hiring of special prosecutor, outside counsel as special prosecutor to manage and prosecute, uh, trials, uh, that may be needed under this process. And also allow for the hiring of outside counsel or special investigator if the city council were to call for, uh, investigation previous to a trial. There is a substitute that has been offered. Essentially, uh, the substitute, or I can, I can kind of leave it at that and let the council deal with the substitute or ask, answer any questions.
Councilman Lester, did you have a motion?
Yes, I moved to, uh, adopt the substitute bill, uh, that, uh, Councilman Allers and I worked with staff.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
All right, we're gonna do a roll call, vote on the substitute. That is just to put the substitute on the table. Councilman Spencer, do you have a comment?
Yes, I, I just have a question of staff. Could, could you go over the highlights of what the substitution is versus what the original version?
Sure thing. So, um, substitute adds, uh, a, a section two dash fifty-four at the end of part B titled abusive process. It states that, uh, an official who knowingly makes a request for discipline based on false information may be subject to discipline under provisions of this part B. Be happy to answer your questions, but I think that's fairly self-explanatory.
Thank you.
And then also, um, it increases the threshold for, um, for, um, either to move to trial. So, so a situation where a city council member, uh, brings a request for discipline, section two fifty-one B two allows that, uh, upon a vote of the council, that, uh, matter be proceed to trial based on the information, the evidence stated in a request for discipline. The substitute increases that threshold from six council members, uh, to seven council members, or, uh, from five council members plus the mayor to six council members plus the mayor. So just increases that threshold to proceed to trial. Similarly, uh, same number, same, same, uh, threshold is to order an investigation, just increasing from six to seven, or, uh, five plus the mayor, six plus the mayor. And then finally, um, increasing, uh, the threshold from six members of the council, uh, to suspend a council member to seven members. Or alternatively, increasing from, uh, seven members to eight in order to suspend the mayor, uh, you know, per, uh, ending a trial. So that's, uh, that's it.
So, you know, the genesis was, of this was started with, with me and not having really a clear defined, uh, process to be able to deal with an inappropriate comment from colleague. So with that, with that scenario, would Mr. Mealy been able to vote?
No.
Okay.
So under, under, under this code, um, council members who are the subject of the request for discipline, uh, do not participate.
Okay. So, I guess I'm just a little, you take that, that member out, and let's say we even add a scenario of it's more than one council member, and they can't participate, and they're, they're not allowed to vote on that. Then, I mean, we're, I'm not sure that those, those numbers are, are, are needed. It's the prerogative of the council. So, but again, the, you know, this is a process, and this was, you know, compromised and better than what we have, which is nothing. So I will yield to, um, the work of Mr. Allers and Mr. Lester, making on the substitution, I'll, I will be supportive. Thank you. I appreciate your, uh, that.
Mr. Lico, are you, how many on the substitute? Whether we move to the substitute?
I'll make my comment once it gets to the floor here.
Okay. All right, so what you have before you now is to adopt the substitute to get it on the table. Everybody comfortable, you're not making a final vote on it, you're just getting the substitute language on to the table. Do a roll call vote.
Young?
Aye.
Allers? Hozelton? Job?
No.
Hozelton, no. Job?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
The substitutes adopt.
I didn't, Ron, I didn't, I didn't know if you heard me. I said aye.
They, they got yours.
Okay.
You got your vote.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Substitute twenty twenty four dash zero six eight in front of you. Councilman Lico, you had a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I certainly believe that, that elected officials should be held to the highest ethical and moral conduct. That should hopefully go without saying for all of us and, and everyone across the country. While there's a lot of good things and good intent, I think behind this document, it also creates a lot of questions, and essentially a lot of, lot of cost, um, whether intended or unintended. One of my thoughts ours is, that I think probably needs to be in here somewhere, is anybody that, that makes complaint or complaints of one or many, and, and the abuse of that complaint process, meaning that maybe, while, while the garbage in here talks about something being truthful or, or factual, while something may be truthful or factual, is it a basis, is that complaint a true basis for, for getting something out there publicly that may or may not have any credence or really any real need to be checked from this body? And, and what I mean by that is, is could, could there be mo, false motivations, uh, or guided, um, uh, or unethical reasons why someone would file a complaint? Because it's instantly, as this process outlines, it's instantly brought to the public once it's given to the clerk. And people say things in politics, um, because that's been entered in, in this body many times. I, I'd like to try to keep politics out of it. And, and if somebody, um, desires to get something out publicly through this mechanism, that can taint not only the process, but the body as a whole, the city as a whole, to create controversy, uh, surrounding whatever that complaint could be. So I'm, I'm really concerned by that and, and the unintended consequences by, by, in which the way this process is laid out. And I, I think in the second, on page ten, I believe it's page ten, um, possibly we need, and it does mention this in the actual paragraph, but it, we probably need to be a little clearer on, on abuse, um, and what that means. I just, I think we need to clean that up a li, a little bit, uh, to be more precise. Just worried about protecting the sanctity of our city and our council, um, a little bit, and making it a little, little, little better.
You know, so I think I saw Councilman Hozelton up there. Councilman Hozelton, do you have a comment?
Mr. Mayor, um, towards, uh, Councilman Lico's comment. Unfortunately, I don't think that it's practical to codify and specify every single act that triggers the necessity for this ordinance. At some point, we have to go along with what, uh, Chief Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes at one time said, "I know it when I see it." So common sense has to prevail here, too. If it's necessary to go through this process, we're all gonna know. And that's why we're gonna vote to go along with it, uh, if, if we see that it's necessary to go down this road. Not just one single councilman can hijack the train and drag everybody down along with him. Six or seven of us have to go along with it to begin with. And we all understand the gravity of going down this road. So it's something that's only gonna be used as a necessary tool when necessary. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Lester?
Just clarification. It sounds like, uh, Councilman Lico's, uh, references is to the guidelines. He mentioned page ten.
Oh, I meant page, or section two fifty-four. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, I, I just think this is a tool that's been lacking. You know, um, a pack was formed, uh, the last election cycle for open and transparency of government, respect and integrity and transparency. And, um, you know, all five current members that were elected, uh, were supported by that pack. So I think, uh, that should be taken into consideration. I think it's, it's a, like I said, it's a tool that, uh, I don't, I don't foresee people abusing and utilizing as a, as a tool for, for retribution in any way. So, um, I think this is a great opportunity for us to, to put our words in action. So I fully support it. Thank you.
Councilman Allers, then Councilman Mealy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that, um, Councilman Lester and I have had numerous discussions on this and trying to maybe get something for our city, um, and that would be so broad, as far as just total outright, um, removal and all that. And as just, you know, I get what, uh, Councilman Lico says about, you know, this could be abused by someone, but, uh, what Councilman Hozelton said, you know, you, you know it when you see it. I have, I have a lot of faith in that the, whoever council it is, whether it be this one, the next one that gets sworn in in April, will have the, um, upstandingness to, you know, not do this. And, uh, that's really the only intent of how this was, it was going to come about. I think if, if I remember right, and, and Councilman Lester can, and, uh, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe it was Hozelton, I, I wish I could remember, uh, that we were probably one of the only big municipalities that didn't really have something down and, and more than what it was, good or bad. I get it. But, um, uh, the whole idea was behind is kind of maybe to take a little bit of the five-five ties and, 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 and make sure that we all, as a ten-member group, are, it's, it's a more serious than what that was. And we don't, we, we shy away from that. That was the intent. That's what the discussions were about to all my colleagues on the, um, um, the council. And I think it's, um, I think it's worth putting in that, um, you know, and I, I appreciate Brian and, and Ryan. Ryan is meeting with us for a long time, and we throw, we threw different ideas about, uh, even about an ethics committee at one time, something that's probably worth looking at future. But, um, I, I appreciate Councilman, or, uh, Councilor Moleman's input and thoughts and his direction on a lot of this stuff. So, um, I appreciate it, and, uh, thank you all, council members.
Thank you. Councilman Mealy?
Thanks. I had a question about the same section two dash five four, abusive process. So if a, uh, if you're a council member sitting here that's, uh, received a false accusation under this section, any official who knowingly makes a request for discipline based on a false inform, based on false information may be subject to discipline under the provision of part B. So I guess what I was wondering from maybe Councilman Allers and, uh, Mr. Moleman and, uh, Councilman Lester is, is there a defined process there for, um, the, I can't think of the word, what you would call the falsely accused, but do they submit a? Request for discipline is the same process. So you would just keep going to the clerk each time? Yes. The clerk has however many things in her, in her hand. Yeah. Okay. That, that does, I agree, that, that leaves a lot to, to kind of pilfer through. So hopefully, you know, future councils, current councils don't, uh, don't get to that point. I, I, I have a lot of, uh, similar concerns with some of my colleagues. I mean, I, I can see a scenario where you, a situation where, you know, somebody may want to retaliate against somebody else, and it's, it's just like the clerk each day is getting a new, a new form until they go to her ceiling, you know? So, okay. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Schwartz, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, uh, you know, self-discipline, uh, of bodies like these, whether it's on the federal level or the state. Obviously, we've seen the state one recently with Governor Greitens. All, all those have been laid out and codified in either a constitution or a state statute or a federal law that tells exactly the steps needed to be taken. I, I think the notion that there's going to be nefarious, um, things done with this is, is probably something that's not gonna happen due to the fact that the alternative for the person making the accusations, if they do it falsely, is to go through the exact same process. So I, I think that's a false red flag. I believe it's high time we have a good process. We hire, uh, councils for a reason. If the councilor believes that, um, the law as it's currently written is not up to par with regards to disciplinary procedures, then I think we should listen and, uh, take care of it. So I'll be voting in the affirmative. Thank you.
Any other comments on substitute twenty twenty four dash zero six eight? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote on the substitute.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton?
Aye.
Job?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Substitute passed.
All right.
Thank you.
Nothing on informal, good resolutions, twenty twenty four dash thirty-five.
A resolution authorizing an agreement for the sale of real estate between Red Oak Real Estate LLC of the City of Jefferson for a portion of property addressed as twenty-five zero five West Edgewood Drive.
Councilman, would you like to get this on the table?
Yes, I would, please.
Is there a second to the resolution? Thank you, Councilman.
Bang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yeah, so this, this is a, a piece of property that's, uh, adjacent to the intersection of Creek Trail Drive and West Edgewood Drive. Back a number of years ago, I think it was in two thousand and fourteen, um, we did a, a traffic study in the area as we were contemplating the expansion of what at that point in time was Frog Hollow Road. We had some pushback from the, the residents along that street at that point in time. And so the traffic study was evaluating whether or not there is a way of connecting, um, Creek Trail Drive to Frog Hollow. That mean?
Trail Drive to Frog Hollow, and what did that mean? So the study did determine that that was possible, however, to make that possible, it included the construction of roundabouts at the intersection of Creek Trail Drive and another one at Stadium and West Edgewood. And so the property that's being discussed today is actually a piece of property that would be necessary for the construction of the roundabout at Creek Trail Drive. We currently are entering into a design contract for the design of those roundabouts, but certainly this opportunity has arisen because that property is being developed, and we have worked with the owner in such a way that this portion of that property wouldn't affect his proposed development. And so the city is looking at buying that property from him at the price that he paid for it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Just one.
Councilman Mealy?
Thank you. My question was actually on the cost of the property, and so it kind of clears it up, I guess, that's what he paid for it, so I guess there's kind of a verification there with staff that that is what it sold for. So I noticed point, not even two tenths of an acre for, what, $140,000? I mean, I understand commercial, I get it, but...
Right, and so that, it is the, we are paying him the price that he paid for it himself. We had had the property appraised a number of years ago before it sold to Dr. Tubner, and the price at that point was, you know, what he ultimately did sell it for. And so that price has kind of been set for these last several years.
It's what he paid for it on a per square foot.
Correct.
All right, seeing no other questions, you have resolution 2024-35 in front of you for roll call.
Hozelton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, item B, resolution 2024-36.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to secure renewal to the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership Contract.
Councilman Allers, do you have a motion to get this on the table?
I'd move that we move resolution 2024-36 for vote.
Second?
To get it on the table.
All right, you have 2024-36 in front of you. Any comments or questions? Mr. Holtschneider is online, thank you for being with us, Luke. All right, seeing no questions, we'll go to roll call vote.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, item C, resolution 2024-37.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, adopting policies and procedures for the 2025 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Councilman Spencer?
Yes, I'd like to assist, to be voted on tonight, RS 2024-37.
Second? Thank you, Councilman Lester. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as the clerk read, this is essentially a resolution adopting the policies and procedures manuals for the Community Development Block Grant. It lays out how staff administer some of the programs that we have, like housing counseling, down payment assistance, and other programs. So be happy to answer any questions.
I'll just make one comment, I appreciate all the work that's done there, and then we pass the item up in the consent agenda, so I appreciate all the work being done in your department, paying dollars for us.
Absolutely.
All right, seeing no other comments, you've got 2024-37 resolution in front of you for roll call.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, appreciate you guys sticking with us, we're heading toward Councilwoman Young's motion, so. Item D, resolution 2024-38.
A resolution of the City Council, the City of Jefferson consenting to the mayor's appointment to the Board of Directors for the Christie Drive Community Improvement District.
Councilman Schwartz, or do you like to make a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Spicer, seconded, you've got 2024-38, any comments? Need a roll call vote on this as well.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
All right, item 15, closed session minute from December 16, 2024, we'll need to approve those.
We do approve.
Motion, we got second, we need a roll call vote on that as well.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
And it's approved.
All right, that takes us to item 15, I'm sorry, item 16, the cancellation, the proposed cancellation of the January 21 meeting. As you know, when we set up the calendar, the recommendation was obviously to move it off of Martin Luther King birthday on the 20th. There's a lot going on nationally, a lot going on within our state with legislature just being back, so I think there was a recommendation, but you see the recommendation in front of you to cancel that meeting, but we'll need a motion to do that. Councilman Spicer, Councilman Spencer, second, any other comments on that? We need a roll call vote on that as well.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Young?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Hozelton?
No.
Joe?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, item 17, no unfinished business. I did want to make one comment before you make your motion, Councilwoman. I appreciate everybody that came out tonight. We tried to find another date to host this meeting, too, and it just seemed like it worked out better to hold a meeting tonight. And, you know, I appreciate everybody that stayed with us online, or guests, but I'm more appreciative of staff that did show up, thank you for braving the roads, and our crews have done great jobs, but nature's not cooperating with some of this ice repellent that they're putting down, so I appreciate the people, please drive safely when you go home, but thank you, and Mr. Wells and our law enforcement. Chief, you're just kind of hiding back there, Chief Scofield?
He's gone.
You already left?
He's been gone for like an hour.
All right, well, Councilwoman Young, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I move that this meeting be adjourned.
You have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you.